Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please Chief.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
She really is here. She's with us by phone. Councilman Varys.
Here.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Here.
Councilman Katina.
Here.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes, I'm here.
President of the House.
Yes, here.
Mayor Cadizik.
Here.
All present.
At this time, we'll take any public comments on motions that are listed on the agenda. If you have any comments on motions that are listed on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak on them. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address. There being no comments, we'll start into the administrative and financial motions. Note that their motions E, F, G, and H will be deleted from the list. These are motions to reappoint companies that we do business with. We learned this week that it's not necessary to do that each year. We only need to do that on January following the council election. So that would have been last year and next year. So we will ask Councilwoman Katina to handle motions A through D. Councilman?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from the council meeting on December 10, 2012.
Second. Discussion, comments?
I'd just like to ask the chief to apologize to Edna for me for not giving her that list. It was so long and I told her I would get it to her about the thank yous for the part because she wanted to put that in the minutes and I didn't get it to her. So that's my fault. So please apologize to her for me.
I will. Any other comments on the motion? A roll call vote, please Chief.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the House.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on December 27, 2012.
Second. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
President of the House.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the January bill list and bill listed then.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President, on that motion, I'm going to vote no. I have an objection with the $8,000 a month that we pay for the fire department, for the fire department building. Approximately 2009, whenever the fire department couldn't afford to pay their mortgage any longer, the borough took over the payments. And again, the payment is $8,000 a month, which is $96,000 a year. There have been interest and penalty charges we've paid also over the years. Now, the one reason why I'm doing this is the title to that property is not in the borough name. It is in the fire department's name. I believe that we should, since we're paying for the building, the building should be the borough's property. And from month to month now as we're going through the bill list, if that isn't changed, because they are on a variable mortgage, adjustable mortgage, which means they're paying a very high rate. I've been on council for three years. I suggested back then that they, somebody refinance that building, which was never done. They're probably at an eight to an eight and a half, 8.75 rate, which is unbelievable. And we're paying all that money for them. We also pay all their expenses, all their utilities, all their maintenance, all their gasoline, all their insurance. We pay everything over there. But if we're going to pay for a building and we're going to pay $8,000 a month, we should have title to that building.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else have comments on the bill list? Roll call vote, please Chief.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
No.
President of the House.
Yes.
Motion passes. Five to one.
Motion to adopt the 2013 general fund budget.
Second. Comments? I would mention that the budget this year is a 2.6% increase over last year's budget. Most of that is for normal inflationary increases on our employees, cost of living raises. But also, we have this year a substantial increase in our workers' compensation insurance. It's a pretty large hit this year. So while we did get the benefit of our medical insurance being flat this year, we actually did not have an increase in cost of medical insurance. We did have a large increase in the cost of workers' comp. And along with our employee cost of living raises for inflation, accounts for the increase in the budget this year. Any other comments? Anyone wants to make on the budget?
The only comment I want to make there is I'll have to vote no for this also because the numbers I talked about before are already built into the budget. So we have to vote no.
Any other comments? Chief, roll call. Councilwoman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
No.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
President of the House.
Yes.
Motion passes. Five to one. We'll continue with code enforcement, motions. Councilman Sarsfield will read the motion in Councilwoman Kobe's absence.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion this evening, motion A, to motion to approve a site plan for proposed pharmacy coffee shop at the old post office location on East Main Street, conditional upon the granting of any variances necessary from the zoning hearing board.
Second. Discussion or comments?
I just, you know, it's been talked about a long time. I just can't wait till it comes to fruition. For anybody that doesn't know, the medicine shop will be moving its location from where it's currently at up to the old post office and a coffee shop in there. And that being right in the heart of our business district, I think is absolutely fantastic. So I'm very excited. My wife loves coffee, so she's excited.
Do we know where this is right now in the planning and zoning process?
To every.
Do you know where this proposal is right now?
Site plan approval, once awarded, then they can apply for their permits.
The planning commission hasn't approved it yet? It hasn't gone in front of them yet?
They need, it's permitted use. It's retail.
So it doesn't need to go to planning? It needs to go?
There's a provision in the ordinance that allows council to make the approval not go into planning.
Okay.
Because it is permitted use.
Are there any zoning variances required? Is this motion in the case?
We don't know because they haven't given us a detail on their off-street parking lot. They have a provision for it, but it's lacking paving and drainage and lighting, those kind of details.
So this will go in front of the zoning hearing board then for variances?
If their plan is lacking the zoning requirements for those details.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on this motion? Does this require a roll call vote?
No.
Two A. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll continue with public works, motions. Councilwoman Dampco, please.
Motion to authorize the purchase of a 2013 Ford F-550 XL 4x4, regular cab truck from Allegheny Ford under the Costar municipal pricing program at a cost of three annual payments of $22,991.92.
Second. Comments?
Keith, do you have any comments on that?
Roll call vote, please Chief.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the House.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment application number three to Soul Life Construction, Inc., in the amount of $38,993.47 for the 2012 sanitary sewer repair contract A excavation repairs.
Second. Comments, anyone? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
President of the House.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment application number two to JMF Underground, Inc., in the amount of $39,041.35 for the 2012 sanitary sewer repair contract B lining repairs.
Second. Comments? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
President of the House.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment application number one and final to Shea Cog in the amount of $69,225.67 for work performed by State Pipe Services, Inc., for contract 24000-1203 - Shea Cog O and M CCTV inspections and cleaning, year one.
Second. Comments, anyone? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
President of the House.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment application number two to Gary Metzinger Cement Contractor in the amount of $22,090.50 for the Morrow Avenue Bridge reconstruction project.
Second. Comments?
Just to make everybody aware, this was part of the bond money going to pay for the bridge. It's been in need of the deck replacement for many years. And, you know, I think everybody here on council will feel much better about that neighborhood and that area once the bridge project is completed.
Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the House.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment application number three to KES demolition in the amount of $8,336.25 for work completed on the 2012 demolition project.
Second. Comments?
Again, Mr. President, I just want to point out that these, this again, was bond money. It allowed us to do more demolitions than we normally do. On most years, we can maybe get one or two done. We had an increase in that. And again, it was the passage of the bond. It was able to allow us to do this.
Chief, is this the last payment for this? It's not the final payment.
Not the final payment on the bond.
This project goes, one home left.
I believe there's one more we need to be built.
Okay.
Is there one more we need to be built for? Or is there one more that needs to be completed?
I'm not sure if it's depending on the mayor. I know that there's one.
Any other comments on this demolition project? This was, I believe, 10 structures that we tore down over this contract. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
President of the House.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll continue with public safety motions, item number four. Councilman Sarsfield, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion this evening. It's motion A, it's motion to authorize the purchase of a 2013 Ford sedan police interceptor from Wolson Windford under the terms of the Shea Cog Purchasing Alliance at the cost of $26,791.
Second. Comments?
The purchase of this vehicle, again, keeps our police inventory up to date. The old, not necessarily year-wise, but mileage-wise, usage. This is a vehicle that we trade in and typically by the time we trade it in, we still get a few dollars for it. But it keeps our fleet new and it keeps our officers safe and our community safe.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina. Okay, he's present, but then disposed at the time. Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the House.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll continue with community development. The Councilman Varys, please, item number five.
Motion to direct the borough manager to advertise that the borough is accepting bids for the sale of borough property situated at the intersection of Mansfield Boulevard and Broadway Street, lot and block number, lot and block numbers, 103-M-226.
Second. Let me clarify for folks what this is. This is the parking lot next to Family Dollar at the corner of Broadway and Mansfield. We had advertised this once before. We did receive one bid. It was low in the estimation of council, and so we rebid it. So we are re-advertising this for bids with sealed bids to be taken by February the first.
Was it, actually, we advertised it twice before, right? Once we had a ceiling or a bottom number and nobody met that bottom number, so we had no bids.
Yeah, the first time we advertised it, we put a number, a value, a minimum bid number in the advertisement and there were no bidders. So then we bid it again and the bid, we got one bid and it was below actually the appraised value of the property. And so we decided one more time to advertise this property.
And that's our manager, Mr. President, the minimum bid is going to be $320,000. Does the instructions work?
Yes, this advertiser will indicate a minimum bid of $320,000. Any other further comments from anyone on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll continue with, Mr. President, I'm sorry, what's the big window on that too? February the first is the last date it's submitted.
Okay, thank you.
We'll continue with committee reports. We'll start with Councilman Katina.
Mr. President, I have no report, but I would like the record to reflect that I am a yes voter on the public safety 4A to purchase the new car.
Thank you. Code enforcement. Councilwoman Kobe, do you have anything to add from your involvement station?
Not this much, Mr. President. Thank you.
You're welcome. Public works, Councilwoman Dampco.
Nothing to report.
Public safety, Councilman Sarsfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm certain that the mayor will expound, but recently our police department was involved in a critical situation and I'm sure he'll further comment on that. But I just want to tell the chief, you guys did an excellent job. The mayor will provide the details to that. And also, one of our officers recently became a trainer. I'm sure the mayor will elaborate on that. And I wanted to congratulate Officer Seaman on that. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Varys, anything?
The only thing we have for Wednesday night, the 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00, there's a business mixer at the Off the Wall Theater on West Main Street. And again, it's from 5:00 to 7:00. The cost is $5. And I think we have approximately 100 business owners that are going to be coming that evening. So if anybody else does want to come, again, it's 5:00 to 7:00 on Wednesday.
Thank you. For myself, I want to mention, we had a resident who asked about the problem. She put a television out to the trash and the trash collector did not take it. And there are some new regulations regarding what is called electronic waste. This would be computer terminals, computer printouts, old televisions, et cetera. And you can't just set those things out in the trash anymore. They won't take them. So there are some things that you can do if you have old equipment like that. Certainly, if you call here to the borough during the daytime, Steve can give you some advice on that. There is an actual drop-off point. I have this on 1599 Washington Pike. Steve, do you know where that is exactly?
Just somewhere in Bridgeville.
Somewhere in Bridgeville, okay. There is a phone number. If you have something you need to dispose of, an old piece of computer equipment or television, call the borough building door today and they'll give you some guidance. There is a website you can read, but it's probably just as easy to call the borough.
We'll put that on the website as well.
Thank you. We did pass the budget tonight. And of course, this year has been quite a turmoil when it comes to finances for every municipality in the county because of the real estate tax reassessments. And I will tell you that this is not concluded. There are a number of properties, a lot of people's properties are still in the appeal process. And we don't know whether they will win those appeals or not. As a consequence, normally during this month, or actually even last month, we would have set the tax mileage for the coming year. And we have not done that yet. And we're not going to do it for a while. Judge Weddick, who has been responsible for passing rulings on these assessment matters, has told us and every municipality in the county that they can have up until 10 days before they send out their tax bills to set their mileage rates. Because up until that point, nobody's paying any taxes. And so therefore, we would have until then to set that mileage rate. That will happen for us in the middle of summer. And between now and then, a lot of these hearings should be completed. And we will know if these property owners are going to get their assessments reduced, or in some cases, raised. And we will have a better feeling at that point, early in the summer, of what the actual amount of mileage we need to have in order to pay the borough's bills. So we have passed the budget, as I mentioned earlier, a 2.6% increase over last year. We do get some increases in revenue because of people's wage tax and other taxes that they pay. But of course, a certain amount of that is also your real estate tax. About 40% of our revenue comes from real estate tax. So we will know later in the spring, early summer, what the assessment situation is going to be, and we will set the mileage at that time. It will be less than what it is right now, of course. Right now, our mileage is 7.2. And because the majority of properties are having an increase in value, we will lower the mileage rate to some smaller number. And it could be for you that your tax will be exactly the same. Could be that it's a little less. Could be that it's more. It depends on how your assessment on your particular property has fared. In my particular case, my assessment went up about 30%. And we're probably going to lower the mileage rate by about that amount. So I'm kind of in the middle with a lot of the property owners in Carnegie with a house that's assessed at $96,000, typical home in Carnegie. And my tax is probably going to be about the same as what it was last year. Other people, if you have a home, maybe Carnegie Park or Roswell Heights, maybe where the value has gone up a good bit, you may be paying more tax. If you live in some area that's maybe a poorer neighborhood in the borough, you may find that your tax has gone down. But that's going to vary from each location, from house to house to house. I also get the impression, and I think council will share with me, that impression that the business owners are generally going to see their taxes go up. Property taxes for the business owners seem to be impacted more than the residents. So that's the general situation right now on the taxing. The budget is passed. The mileage will be passed later in the spring and early summer. And that's all I have this evening. So the next item would be anything for the volunteer fire department. I don't see anyone here representing the fire department. I have nothing to report, Mr. President. We did have a brief meeting with the accountant, bookkeeper, I should say, for the fire department and the attorney for the fire department in the caucus that just preceded this meeting. And they are making progress on getting their books in order. And I pressed on them to have for next month's meeting, a final tabulation, an approved tabulation of their accounts, so that we could finally move forward. It's taking a long time, but it does seem that they're making some progress. With that, mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. On your comments, once again, they were right on. I would say, to let everybody know, the school district will be doing the exact same thing that we're doing. Our mileage should go down with the school district also, but they're on a fiscal year. So they run on a different year than us. We're on a calendar As far as last month, December, we have criminal arrests and citations at 31, traffic citations also at 31. Parking tickets were two because, if you remember right, we had an amnesty for parking in the business district. So there was basically not a lot of whole, not many chances to issue parking tickets. So that was a good thing. Complaints and self-initiated activity of our police department, number 870. And for the year, we had, the criminal arrests were 432, the traffic citations were 596, parking tickets were 1,194, and then the complaints and self-initiated activity by the department were 11,558. We will have, at the end of the year, the police department always hands out some awards. There's the Ironman Award for those officers who take those sick days. And this year's Ironmen were our chief Harbin. Of course, I don't know, he doesn't take many sick days at all, if he hasn't taken any. Sergeant Kennedy, Sergeant Link, and Officer Ryder, all were Ironman winners. And then the Officers of the Year, as selected by our chief and his leadership staff, was Officer Seaman and, so we have co-officers of the year. Both of those officers are excellent officers in our department and well-deserving of this award. The Officer of the Year is chosen for the officers that best exemplify the Carnegie Police Department core values. As Councilman Sarsfield mentioned earlier, there was an incident last week up in Pencebury. We had a domestic incident where we had what could have been construed as an individual with a gun or even an active shooter because he discharged the gun. We had four officers respond to that incident. The incident, there was a child and a woman in there with them. They, both of them were exited safely. And the four officers were able to allow the individual, get the individual to set down his arms and turn himself in. And when we went through the, when the officers went through the department for the residents, there were a number of other serious weapons within that facility. So this thing could have escalated into a very violent situation. But as Councilman Sarsfield said, the officers are to be commended. And Mayor Harper has sent a special thank you to the chief in our department for how the officers handled the situation. So Mayor Harper is the mayor of Pencebury. So we appreciate her acknowledging our office. So Mayor Harper is the mayor of Pensbury, so we appreciate her acknowledging our officers, and her officers also, for the job well done. So we're just glad that it was nothing serious. Also, we, Councilman Sarsfeld mentioned the alert training. The alert training was something that was established by, well, it was established in Texas, and it's a nationwide training. We participate through the COG, and it's the Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training, and it teaches officers how to address situations where there's an active shooter. So it teaches an active shooter response. And there was recently a training that was, that happened at South Van High School on the 3rd of January, and we had a number of officers, we had two officers that participated, and we also had Officer Seaman, who is definitely certified as an alert instructor. So that's nice for our department, that we do have an alert instructor. The other, last week, the other day, the three mayors of the school district and all the chiefs of police that utilize our, that service our areas, including Robinson and Scott Township, met with the superintendent and the president of the school district to discuss security concerns at the school. So we came up with some, I think, some very interesting aspects that we need to identify, and the school is actively working on increasing the security that they have. They're in a reconstruction phase, they're going to remodel both Crafton Elementary and Carnegie Elementary. And as they remodel those schools, they're going to enhance the security of both those buildings. So while we think the schools are safe as they are right now, we believe when all this remodeling is completed, the schools will even be a much safer institution for our children. And as we all know with what happened at Sandy Hook, that's on the minds of a lot of individuals in and around the community, whether your children attend that school or not. Really want to thank the craft club, the ladies of the craft club at Carnegie Retirement Residences. They made a nice blanket for DAX. They also make blankets for other service dogs that are overseas, serving our country in Afghanistan and Iraq. So they get together once a week, and they make these blankets. So it's really nice of them to not only honor our dog, but the dog that serve our, other dogs that serve our country overseas, too. So I thank them for that. They also made blankets for Scott Township's dogs, Lord and Eddie, too. Last month, I was telling you about a new sandwich shop that was opening up, Suzie's Sandwich Shop. I've had a privilege of eating there a few times, and it's a Mediterranean deli, and they're open now, and the reviews have been very, very strong for the place. And if you like Mediterranean food, which many people do, you'll really enjoy the food that they serve at Suzie's Deli, so. Picture Park, the skate park, we're moving forward, and as we speak, there's another fundraiser going on. Others might talk about that later on, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows that we do have a design meeting scheduled on February 6th at 7:00 p.m. here at the Borough Building. The designer from Grindline will be back in town, this will be his second visit, and he will give us some conceptual designs that he has, and it'll be our last chance to, not our last chance, but one of our later chances to add or subtract to the design. So I think it's an important meeting for all those who are interested in the skate parks, so come on down, February 6th, 7:00 p.m. here at the Borough Building. Wanted to mention that all the final numbers are in. Total profit of Honant Trail, $6,026.10. So we have that on there, and I'll be giving all that information to the chief this week. One thing I do want to thank, I really, during the holidays, there's a lot that goes on. Everybody's pulled in a lot of different directions. Our community is just absolutely fantastic during the holidays. I really want to thank a lot of the members of our community who have gone above and beyond to make the holidays special for everyone. We have a lot of organizations that really go all out to help all those during the holidays. It actually really makes me proud to be part of this community, because I can't imagine there's another community this size that has this many organizations providing this quality of a service to their residents. Some of the organizations, and I'm sure I'm going to miss some, because some of them are St. Peter's and Paul, Ukrainian Orthodox Church. They provide, on Thanksgiving, they provide a Thanksgiving dinner. They also have a clothes attic where people can go and get clothes once a month. Solid Rock Foundation, they also met on Thanksgiving Day and had provided Thanksgiving dinner to our residents, including deliveries. The Church of the Atonement, the Episcopal Church, they met on Christmas Day, and they, their kitchen wasn't working, and Carnegie United Methodist Church let them use their kitchen, and they provided dinner for anybody on Christmas Day who needed a dinner, including deliveries. Boys and Girls Club, they provide dinner and toys to all the kids that belong to the Boys and Girls Club. They also have a program where they provide full meals to struggling families of the Boys and Girls Club. And they do it kind of low-key, underneath the radar, you might say. The library, beautiful, large Christmas party, and toys for many of our kids in the community. Salvation Army, they participate in a project bundle-up, provided many jackets and food to many people in our community. St. Louis and Seaton, their food bank had unbelievable distributions during the month of November, the months of November and December, really helped a lot of people make ends meet. The Carlington Teachers started a program this year where they identified struggling families within the three communities and delivered bags of food to them before Thanksgiving and Christmas, and including a toy drive. Meals on Wheels makes sure everyone has extra meals in their freezer for the holidays and for emergencies. I mean, I could go on and on, I'm sure missing a number of organizations that have done things that I just didn't have there, but it just goes to show you that really, Carnegie is a very special place. There's a lot of organizations that do a lot for the people here, and I think everybody up here is really proud of being part of that, so. Thank you, thank all these organizations for what they do, support them strongly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any comments, public comments, that you'd like to make on any topic? This is your opportunity to do so.
Mr. President, I had...
Come up here, please, and state your name and where you live.
Lamar Richard Kemp Sr., living at 104 Forest Street. And I've been there about 16 months now, and they haven't been giving out any, like, parking tickets and stuff like that. I didn't know, I thought maybe when I first got there, it was kind of long, really, because it's like, it's two hours between 8:00 and 4:00. But I figured if you live there, because it's kind of like on Third Street, and then also goes around the corner, and there's like two apartment buildings with a total of eight occupants, you know, differently. So, but they haven't been giving them out, but I did receive one. And I just don't know how to go about doing it, because I mean, I know they're going to be issuing more, or, you know, is this something that they're starting to enforce at this point? Or...
Chief, I think you'd have to answer this question, because I don't, I don't respond to that.
Yeah, what you need to do is stop over our administration tomorrow. If you're a resident there, you'll get a tag, the put that you'll be exempt from. So just bring that up a little more.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else who would like to make comments?
Mr. President, I forgot about the Toys for Tots program, too. The chief ran an unbelievable Toys for Tots program this year, and we, officers deliver to Carnegie Towers and to the governor's house, so.
Yes, we have one of the best Toys for Tots collections in the whole region, there's no question about it.
I had that written down, Chief.
Chief does a great job with that, and all the officers.
Number five.
Sorry.
I'm named Carol Walker, I live at 315 Thomas Street, but I'm here right now just to represent Second Baptist Church. I mean, it's all, it's well-known that, you know, we want to purchase the property at 322 Mansville, which is right next door to us. In our past three years, they just wanted to know the zoning laws, that if we purchase the property, would we be able to expand our church on said property?
Zoning laws, can they expand their church on Mansville? Is that within our zoning?
Do you expand the church or use it for parking?
Expand the church, we want to build, and expand our church.
Once you acquire the property, I mean, this is all subjective based on your, your actually being successful in getting the property.
Right, amen.
At that point in time, Terry, jump in if I'm wrong in anything I say here. I think you'd have, what you'd have to do is you have to do a subdivision to make your property, make it that property, part of your property.
Connect it together, connect it to properties on a single beam or a single...
And then there would have to be, I don't think there'd be a problem with zoning for you to expand, but there might be other problems the planning commission would have to address. Would need a more substantive proposal before I could address any of that. But suffice to say, it's something that should be, I mean, should be able to be considered once you're successful in getting the property. At this point, it's kind of hard to say yes or no. But there are procedures that could facilitate a big...
Yeah, the zoning does not prohibit the purchase on...
Yeah, I was thinking zoning would be...
In worst scenario, it'd be a conditional use, but I'm sure we could make it work.
I happened to be behind Saturday, and I wanted to bring it to Terry's attention actually after the meeting tonight, but the gutter on that building, on the church side, I mean, is virtually combined, and I'm concerned that when that comes off there, that it's going to do some damage to the church. I don't know if there's anything we can do. I mean, it's barely hanging there, and I just think when it comes off, there it's going to at least catch the gutter from the church and possibly take that down with it. So I didn't know if there's something we can do about that.
I don't know either. Being owner of the property is deceased, and I believe there's an error, but I can find out, contact the information, see what we can do.
Yeah, if you could do that, because like I said, I have some deep concerns about that, I mean, the Baptist Church is a nice...
Well, even if, even if the gutter didn't damage the building, the water runoff that's going to come off is going to go onto their building.
Right.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else with comments? At this time, we'll go around the table here, ask council members if they have anything to add for Good and Welfare. Councilman Perez?
Nothing this evening.
Councilman Comey?
Yes?
Anything for Good and Welfare?
No, I just wanted to wish Eric one a good month, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Councilman Demko?
Just a few things. We have a fundraiser available right now for the skate park, and it's a ticket for, it's for the first 20 days in February. Every day, it's on the lottery, so there's 20 winners. And every other day is a certificate for diameter mountain or cash. And the 20th, it's $1,000 cash. And the tickets are $20, and they have to be turned in by January 25th. So if anybody is interested in buying one of those tickets, you know, you can call down the Borough Building, they'll give my number. Also, we are doing another fundraiser April 6th. It's going to be a murder mystery dinner. So it's going to be lots of fun, so. And we'll have tickets for those within a week, probably next week, if anybody's interested. Those tickets are $25 apiece, and that's dinner, and then murder mystery, and we'll have Chinese auction, all that kind of thing. And dinner, we get dinner, too. That's it.
Mayor, anything Good and Welfare?
No.
Councilman Cantina?
Two things, Mr. President. The first is, I apologize, I didn't get a chance, I forgot about this last week, I didn't get a chance to bring it up tonight, you just, we were a little rushed back there. But does anyone have any objections to us soliciting membership for junior council, either from Carlington or Canaveral, to see if we can get two council members?
I actually have somebody that sent me, if you're interested, I have somebody that sent something to Liverpool and Southern Avenue.
So does anyone have objection?
I think it's a great idea. Awesome. I mean, I love it. We need to get young people involved more, absolutely.
Okay. And the only other thing I have, Mr. President, is, you know, I've talked about this before, obviously, with council, and we brought it up again a few weeks ago, but permit parking on Beechwood and Library, we're discussing that. And if any of the residents of Beechwood or Library are your for or against it, if they can contact, and the chief's looking at me at this point, because he's trying to spearhead up this effort, to try to figure this one out, because it's going to be, it's going to be obviously a little bit of a challenge to implement. But if you have thoughts, one way or the other, please email me or contact Borough about it, so we can try to engage the general interest, because a lot of people have come to me, obvious are in favor of it at this point, because of the problems we've experienced with the towers. But I would be interested in hearing either side of the issue from anybody who's out there, so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, Councilman Sarsfeld?
Yeah, I want to start by first wishing the Orthodox, people refer to as Russian Christians, which was December 7th, and which makes today Orthodox New Year. So happy New Years to anybody who felt Orthodox out there. And then also, I want to mention that during my moment of silence this month, I prayed for world peace and the end of violence on our streets and across our nation. Life is a valuable thing, and it's taken away so swiftly by oftentimes Polish people, but perhaps our government, our great leaders, will have some intervention in preventing future tragedies such as this. Also look forward to 2013, and perhaps working more directly with Mayor Kudisik to enhance the overall safety of our community. I'm enthused how far we've come, but I know that our work is not done, but in a unified effort of this council, we can make Carnegie the best that it can be. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Before we close, I want to mention that it was a year ago this month that I was elected council president. I want to thank council members for this past 12 months, very professional behavior.